Good evening, everybody. Rough start. Monday, May 6, 2024 at 6:30 PM, and I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. So we're going to jump right into it, and agenda item one, our open session minutes from 4:17, 2024. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 4:17, 2024.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, agenda item two is vote and approve the summer vote on approving the summer concert series proposed by the community program director, and whether do allow exclusive use of the bandstand for this purpose on July 2nd, July 16th, July 30th, August 13th, and August 27th from 4 to 9 PM.
Uh, 6 to 8.
6 to 8 PM.
Do you need time for setup?
Do you need?
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yep, you're right.
So let's do 40, yeah, let's do 4 to 9. That makes more sense, I think. It's always better to get more than you have. All right, and do you want to discuss anything about this, Kylie?
Yeah, uh, the bandstand was like the most feasible option in my eyes, even though parking's a bit challenging. I got permission from the vet to use their parking lot. They were kind enough to let me use it.
That's awesome.
Yeah, um, they just said on the stipulation that no one parks there before 5 o'clock because they're work hours.
Makes sense.
And to, you know, clean up whatever debris, but they were very generous in letting us use that space, so that would be very helpful.
Great.
And then, so will, um, admission be free for this?
Yes.
And I'm sure these will be kind of advertised through our different, all our different kind of mediums that we have.
Yes.
That's awesome.
We have a town hall to park now, right? So town hall normally closes at 4 o'clock, so we would have at least there. I know we would try and keep people over there, you know, not having to cross the road where possible. But if we have an overflow because of people, and let's hope that it continues to grow in popularity, we can, we do have some parking over at town halls as well.
Yeah. And so are we going to have any vendors or anything like that? Have we talked about that at all?
I'm trying to get a food truck.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So Luanne and Deb recommended Machados.
Yeah.
Um, I've reached out to them. They haven't gotten back on dates yet because I know that they have another commitment on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm waiting to hear what their availability is, and I've reached out to some of the food trucks. Kevin actually just recently permitted, and I'm waiting to hear back from them as well.
What's the barbecue one?
That's the Machados.
I went to their website after last time. We, somehow that came up, and it looks really good, so it might be awesome.
Awesome.
Even an ice cream truck I mentioned would be good.
Yeah, one of the ones he actually just permitted was an ice cream truck. I forget, the Cool, Cool Lakes, something like that.
They have beer and wine trucks?
Did I not say that?
Yes.
What might you do with it is a beer and wine truck like at the Hathaway Park.
We might, we might have just had a brilliant idea. Why don't we see this for now?
We talked about that with a movie night, like have a movie night for the kids and have a beer and wine truck.
Yeah, my daughter's wedding had a, that little trailer that they brought in behind them, and it was a full-service bar, but it was in an old horse trailer that they.
That's really cool.
It was really cool.
It was super cool. She sent me pictures.
You're saying, I think the board is open to potentially having a beer and wine truck.
Sure thing.
I second.
Discussions on how she would have to get a one-day liquor license to permit for that, but yeah.
We could make that happen, right?
Oh, yeah. Should we have them?
Very exciting.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll look into that.
I'm sure we can figure that out.
Yeah, unfortunately, just sometimes to get things to be successful, you need to have a beer and wine truck.
Agreed.
All right, so any other questions or concerns in this?
No, no, I just want to say thank you.
Oh, of course. I'm excited. Hopefully it goes well.
Well, it will. Like, you build it, they will come. That's the, that's the saying, right? So.
We did, we did, just so people know, we did try to go towards the center of town at the COA, but given the pods and the construction that we're going to be having this summer, it was a concern about what the, what that was going to look like. So that's why for this summer at least, it's at the bandstand, so.
Yeah.
But in the future, you know, Kylie's going to look into being able to maybe alternate.
That was my original idea, is like half at the bandstand, half at the COA. I'm doing two at the COA before the pods come, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could probably even use the bay roof field back there. It's massive behind the sun council of aging.
Because you mentioned the, uh, the beach, the, I think that's, that'd be kind of cool.
There's no power, right? Is that our issue?
That's what, yeah.
Power at the, the 400 amp service on the football field.
Yeah.
So they can go there, and then the old stone dust would probably be good enough for staging.
Yeah.
So.
I think it's just, um, for the first year.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to work out the kinks here.
But I, I just want people to, you know, know that there was consideration given, and there will continue to be consideration given as things evolve.
Yeah.
To moving things more centrally located so everybody can enjoy them.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion approving the summer concert series proposed by the community program director, and allow exclusive use of the bandstand for this purpose on July 2nd, 16th, 30th, August 13th, and August 27th from 4 to 9 PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then you're still, I think, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just. I wanted to plug the kayak racks.
Yeah. I did, I saw that much. So, yeah, so this is just an announcement that the kayak racks, uh, rental space at Hathaway Park, um, for the community program director. So you want to just speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we have, um, a lot of lots available, I think eight, because one person just recently reserved it, and it's, um, available May 1st to October 31st. So if anyone's interested in storing their kayak racks, it's right at Hathaway Park. And I put like, um, number labels on them, so everyone knows what lot number they'd be assigned to. Um, and all they have to do to apply is just go on freetownma.gov, and then go to community program on the website. And on the left-hand side, it will have like, um, like a little tab that they can click on, and it'll give them more information, and then also have a waiver for them to sign their application.
How much does it cost?
For free.
Pretty, wow. Actually, I have a kayak that I don't use because I have to drag it all the way.
Yeah, it's a pain.
I might look into this.
You should, most definitely.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
If I can just say something, why, um, I wanted to say this later on in the agenda, but while Kylie's here, I just want to give a shout out to her. Everybody got the events, uh, calendar newsletter that came that went out by, um, we used their new, we used the flash, the Free Town flash, but the email and the text option only, so it didn't ring in people's phones. And we've gotten just a great, great response. People are super excited about it, and we're going to continue to evolve. Kylie's going to work, um, on the next quarter to get some, um, maybe some news article type stuff in there about local news that's happening within town. So I just wanted to say shout out to Kylie, what a great job she did on that and getting that out. And there was a lot, a lot of information in there, and people, I've had great feedback.
Yeah, no, I think this is something that like, I think our town really needs, and I think it's huge. And it's like this kind of fun, cool stuff that brings people together, and so I'm really excited that, you know, we're making this happen. You're doing a lot of hard work on it, so it's appreciated.
Thank you so much.
And just, just to update too, I think she said if changes happen in the events, it will automatically update the link. So say next week you want to go in and say, hey, I, I want to see what's happening, the, the information will be updated to the latest information that Kylie has because it automatically updates in that link, so.
Yeah, so that's something that should be frequently checked if like you, you know, if we're thinking about going to somewhere, it probably will be updated. Like, any information I get, since campus is so kind of user-friendly, um, and the link that I have, it's like, um, anyone can really access it, and you don't really need an account either, which is nice.
Yeah.
Um, so I can edit internally, and then you refresh it, and then I'll have whatever information that's new. And I'll do the same, like if there's, um, a plethora of information that I'm putting on there, I'll re-update it on the town website as well if people can access the, like, link from the Free Town flash.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, great. So now we'll move on to agenda item four. This is, um, discussion of vote whether allows exclusive use of the bandstand for, uh, the library-run children's music program? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's run by the library.
The library ran children's music program on 7/24/2024, uh, 12 to 4 PM. Any questions or concerns with that?
No.
That doesn't conflict with any of our other dates. It doesn't so far. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to allow exclusive, exclusive use of the bandstand for the library-run children's music program on 7/24/2024, 12 to 4 PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, agenda item fives, uh, vote on whether to open, review, finalize, and close the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants for 6:30, 2024.
6:30.
What did I say? Six, sorry, 6:30, 2024. Thank you. All right, so we have two new. Are these new articles or are they?
Yes. One was in there, like a placeholder we had, the retiree health insurance cost. This is for the spouse of a retired, um, employee. Legally, right now, we're not supposed to pay any portion of the spouse's, um, health insurance. This option, um, if voted in, would give the selectmen the authority to vote any amount of payment towards the spouse's retirement, um, surviving spouse health insurance, 50% or higher. I think it actually has to be higher than 50%, so it might be 51% or higher. There were options to do just 50% or less than 50%, but I, I thought that, um, this one would be the most appropriate since we're paying 95% currently. That, after this is enacted, then the selectmen can make the vote to approve whatever number they want, up to 90%. 95% is actually outside the statute. It's between 50 and 90. So this just kind of, again, we're trying to correct some, um, prior things that we're already paying, but we don't have the right statutes in place to technically be paying these amounts. So sort of a housekeeping thing.
Gotcha.
The second one that I, I handed you is that we get a grant, um, I applied for a grant, and I get a grant that will pay to map the water and sewer infrastructure in the town. So the grant, the total cost for that was $205,000. The grant will pay for $125,000 of it, and will allow, um, about a third of it to be like employee hours. So out of pocket costs is about $47,000 is what we'll have to pay out of cash. But in order to facilitate the grant, they want you to allocate the whole $205,000 because they want to make sure you can pay for it because it's a reimbursement grant.
Gotcha.
So we, we have to allocate the money, then they'll get, they'll let us do the work, and then they reimburse us the money. And this is how all of the grants kind of work, although they don't always require us to allocate the funds.
Yeah.
Now, these funds, as, as, um, this is recommended, will come out of, you know, the water and sewer enterprise funds reserves, um, so to be allocated. So that's what that's about.
Silly question, obviously, once we get reimbursed, does it go back into their same funding mechanisms?
You know, I'm going to have to check with Matt on that. Um, that's a good question, so I will follow up with Matt. I don't know.
About like the general fund?
I'm thinking it might go to the general fund, and then we'll have to reallocate it back to the water department.
Yeah, just because, I mean, they, you know, if they're going to have the money, if they're saving the money to use towards projects, I don't, you know.
Oh, I don't want to take their money, right?
Yeah, no, and that's what I'm saying, and I know that. I guess, so I'm just saying, just to be clean as possible. If we're taking, you know, forty something thousand dollars today, and we can give them back the forty something thousand dollars tomorrow, then it's fine.
Yeah, and honestly, we're going to talk about opera tonight, but the 46,000 or 47,000 that needs to come out of the, the actual cash that needs to come out of the town, I think it might be appropriate to take that out of opera. So we'll talk about that further. But I didn't want to have to get a vote for so much opera and then so much from the town, just because it gets messy, and it's just sort of one of those allocations that isn't actually going to cost money. It's not going to actually come to fruition, so that's what that article is. I don't know that there was any other, oh, there is another article I added. When, uh, the chief, the fire chief was here, we talked about getting a new ambulance. And I wasn't sure on where we were with the funding and whether we had the funds. He, him and I had had discussions. He said he could wait another year. At the end of when we kind of pulled the budgets all together, we have the available money to purchase the ambulance. So I added that article, um, to the warrant to fund the purchase of an ambulance. The, the, the reality of it is, um, it takes two years to get an ambulance. So where we have the funds, we'll allocate the funds.
Locking the price now, right, as soon as possible?
And then the funds will actually sit in our, in our investment accounts, and are earning interest at hopefully close to 5%. So, you know, we'll be able to get some money out of that, um, but I did add that one as well. I don't believe I added, um, any other articles since the last time.
Learned with the, the price increase of equipment, it's why not?
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't think, um, do you remember any other ones?
I'm looking through now.
Yeah, there's quite a few zoning articles.
Use your phone. I think we took off the cruiser one.
No, I took off the article for, to fund the planning board, um, online permitting for $30,000. I took that off. I put it in their budget.
Okay.
So I put it in as an expense in their budget.
Yeah.
Um, as opposed to an article. I don't know that there's a particular reason, but it was a small number in relation to our overall warrant articles, and Matt thought it best to put it there, so I, I didn't disagree with them. I did let them know that I changed their budget, and I added it to their budget, $30,000, and I took the warrant article off.
Okay.
The cruiser was off. I don't know if it was here the last time. I did the same with the police cruiser. There was a police cruiser to fund, um, you know, replacing a, a police cruiser, but I believe that was already in our capital budget in the last meeting.
All right, cool. So now how does this vote have to work? So did we close it already?
So you need to, oh, yeah, I think you did. So I think you need to open it to add these articles, so you need to technically open the warrant, vote to open it.
So I'll entertain a motion to open the annual and special town meeting warrants?
Yes, because the mapping one is going to go on the special town meeting.
Uh, for 6:30, 2024?
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I think you need, I don't know if you want to go through now. I don't know that you, have you?
We went through.
Did you, you, I think you have to officially just recommend them, so unless you don't want to recommend them, I guess you could just recommend them all at once. But the second vote will be to add these two articles, one to the special town meeting and one to the annual, you know?
We didn't have any issues with anything.
I don't think so.
No, after the last ones. We haven't had any issues with any.
No, I didn't think so either. It's actually two to the annual town meeting. It's the ambulance one, and it's the retiree health insurance cost.
Okay, so they're both to the annual?
Those are to the annual. The mapping water and sewer infrastructure is to the.
Special.
Yeah. So a vote to add those?
All right, so I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to add the, so the retiree health insurance costs, um, article to the annual town meeting as well as, so the other one we just talked about, the annual?
The ambulance.
Oh, and the purchase of the ambulance to the annual town meeting.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to add the, um, mapping water and sewer infrastructure article to the special town meeting.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion that we recommend, um, all articles on both the annual and the special town meeting.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I will entertain a motion that we close the annual and the special town meetings, uh, warrants for 6:30, 2024.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do they need to finalize or dispose?
I think, I think, I think it's okay.
That might be the.
Most motions per minute. That's efficiency.
Thinking that.
So, okay.
Six sigma, that's best right there.
That was good.
All right, so now I have some proclamations. So agenda item six, to discuss and vote whether issue a proclamation recognizing Free Town's first responders in honor of Emergency Medical Services Week, which is from 5/19 through 5/25, 2024. So I'll read this proclamation right now, so EMS Week proclamation. To designate the week of May 19th, uh, through 25th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas medical, uh, emergency medical services have given, have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive care, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams, whether, um, career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week now. Therefore, we, the Free Town Board of Selectmen, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week. With this being the 50th anniversary of the first, uh, National EMS Week, we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate, uh, programs, ceremonies, and activities. So I'll entertain a motion that we, I guess, accept this proclamation?
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have some of the best teams here in Free Town.
We really do, yeah.
And, and I'm not just saying that. I've heard that from people who work in the hospital, that they say like Free Town is second to none, so it's good to hear that about our team here. Um, so just want to give that shout out to them as well, to all of them, you know, just right down the line, police, fire, dispatch, everybody.
So, all right, and now, also, I should know, I saw some posts that, you know, they've been doing for like, the, and the police have been doing, and it's, it's really cool, just kind of shouting out different people that, you know. Yeah, people don't, you know, generally don't see that, they're, you know, they're not, and it's just really cool that, giving them the proper credit. All right, so agenda item seven is, this is another proclamation, um, to recognize the 55, 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week from 5/5 through 5/11, 2024. So I'm going to read this one as well. Where, uh, proclamation 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week from 5/5 from May 5th through May 11th, 2024, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between citizens and the, uh, local governing bodies and agencies of the government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks, clerks have pledged to, um, be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, um, rendering equal service to all, whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas the Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk throughout participation in educating, education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, um, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most important that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerks. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Free Town, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to all Professional Municipal Cler, uh, Town Clerks, Cheryl, uh, Estrella, and all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform, and their, oh, wow, that's just self-aware for me. Experiori, I can't say that for some reason, dedication to the communities, explo, yeah, I can't say it, I can't read it. Dedication to the communities they represent, dated this sixth day of May, 2024. All right, so I'll entertain a motion that we also accept this proclamation.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye. You just did a lot of reading and a show.
I just, you know, some words I just can't.
And again, Cheryl does a great job for the town.
Absolutely.
And she, I mean, she works hard.
Yes, she does, and especially like, I think that role.
Both of them in that department market, she made a difficult.
That role has evolved, like, and it's, you have to be very tech savvy now, and there's so many different regulations, and we all know that, you know, just voting in general is a very hot topic with a lot of eyes on it. And so definitely, uh, a lot of kudos to her, her team, that have to navigate through these very tricky waters, and it's just, it's obviously extremely important part of government function, so. All right, so that is agenda item seven. All right, so now, agenda item eight, this is a vote whether to close the transfer station for training on 6/20/2024, 8 AM through 1 PM, and 6:20 is a?
It's a Thursday?
Thursday.
Is this the?
This is the hoist thing.
Yeah. This, this is, this is really important, that the highway department and these, uh, individuals get this training at this point.
Okay. Well, any, any questions or concerns?
As long as we post it to our normal avenues and do what we can to educate the public.
Absolutely.
What the opponent needs to be done.
Yep. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the transfer station for training on 6/20/2024, 8 AM through 1 PM.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we have a peddler's license request from Sunrun, uh, JLA Consulting. Is that two different ones? Or is that just one?
I think it's, yeah, it looks like one. I think it's all the same thing because it's the name on the.
JLA must work for Sunrun, maybe?
Yeah, the way that, I don't want to call their name out, but it's Jennifer something, you know, so I think that that's what JLA must come from.
So this is like a solar company?
Yeah, so it's, so it's a business theme, Sunrun JLA Consulting, so she must work or consult for Sunrun.
Well, I'm actually happy to see them apply for one of these because I get solar crew at my house three times a week, and I know I'm not issuing them peddler's license.
So, yeah, I just think that they, they need to have identification on them. It would be very helpful, and then let the police know that they're.
In the neighborhood.
Yeah, and if they could let Luanne know, we could put something on Facebook, you know, because we always get these calls. Does anybody know who this is? People are knocking on the doors.
Yeah.
The more communication we can have, the safer everybody will be.
They seem to always knock on the door, right, as soon as my baby falls asleep?
And the dog goes.
And the dogs are, yeah, it's just almost 100% going to happen.
So I would definitely echo the, the idea of making sure that they at least call the police station, right? Because, I mean, if they can let us know, great, but a lot of times they might also be out on a weekend, so, but.
Yeah.
The police should know.
Yeah.
Because they're going to get.
Save a trip to.
Of why there's a stranger walking up to their home.
And just be, exactly, have, be well identified too, right? Having the shirt with a logo or a pass or something, you know, that indicates where they're from. I think that helps a lot. All right, but I'm, no problem approving this, you know? All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the peddler's license request from Sunrun JLA Consulting.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, next we have vote on whether to approve the business associate agreement and agreement between the town of Free Town and coastal medical billing for 7/1, 2024 through 6/30, 2025.
There's the agreement.
This is just the, uh, medical, uh, the, the, the billing for the ambulance runs.
Yeah.
They, they, this is their second year, I believe, so, um, just the contract. They pick, they charge 3% of what they bill.
And that's, is that the same as it was in the first contract you sent?
It went out to bid, and that's, it was a three-year contract. It was 3% for each year. Yep, it was the cheapest, uh, bid.
All right, any questions or concerns?
No.
No. All right, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the business associate agreement and agreement between the town of Free Town and coastal medical buildings for 7/1, 2024 through 6/30, 2025.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have agenda item 11, which is discussion of vote on awarding chipaway milling and pavement RFP. And it looks like.
Keating? Yep, Keating Company, yep. A long shot.
Yeah, so they came in at, my, I can disclose this, right?
Yeah.
At 550,850, compared to everyone else was well, almost, you know, close to 700,000. All right, any questions or concerns?
No.
No. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to award the chipaway milling and pavement RFP to, uh, TJ Keating Company.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And now, Gen item twelve is to approve the contract between the town of Freetown and PJ Heating Company for chip away milling and pavement, so I intend a motion to approve that contract.
Uh, motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only question now that I think of it is, is do we, because it's, and I don't think it's gonna matter, they broke off. Uh, Carpenter Lane as being separate, so I don't know if we have to approve that. It's all part of it, yeah, I know, it's fine, just because it's called out as chip away in here and then it's broken off, so I just.
If you want to just add a motion to it, that it, you know, that the con, the bid and the contract both include that.
Sorry, I'm not trying to be petty. It's all under the same company, one again, right, so it's.
So how about this?
Do you want that second piece, do you know?
Yeah, they built it with the RFP for various streets.
Yeah, right, but it's an alternate one.
Yeah, that's the thing, right, see, it was alternate, so maybe, maybe it's, like, potentially the top one is inclusive of.
Yeah, he is adding it by the price on the contract, he's adding the Carpenter's Lane, he's adding the alternate one.
And that's a part of the agreement, right?
It is part of the.
So we, and we approve the agreement.
Yeah, I'm probably overthinking it.
Thirty eight thousand five hundred to do that extra portion. I'm sure Chuck was waiting to see what the bids came in to see how much money he has, because this is pretty high, uh, cost and he's got his. Chapter ninety money and his what's left over for Marco money and he probably wanted to make sure he had enough to do something. But it looks like he's got enough to do both of them, so that's part of, um, that's part of the agreement and it was part of the bid that went out.
Perfect.
So you think we're good?
I think you're fine.
Sorry.
No, that's good, I'd rather be safe than sorry. Alright, so now, Gen item thirteen, discussion of vote whether to approve supplemental contract between the town of Freetown and agreement Peterson. For Kelly and Quantapog Road Pavement Slope Stability Improvements.
Yeah, this was a, this already went out to bid and went out, um, I mean, went to them to do work on it. They're just changing the contract, they're taking something out, adding something else. But because the original contract was paid for out of chapter ninety, it just made it easier to put a second, a new contract, a supplemental contract to the original contract. Then amending the original contract, it's just really for procedure at this point. Some additional eight thousand dollars for the work that Chuck requested them, engineer for that job.
Alright, any questions or concerns, folks?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Alright, so with that, I'll turn a motion to approve the supplemental contract between town of Freetown and Peterson for Kelly and Quantapog Road Pavement. Slope Stability Improvements.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now we're, Gen item fourteen is awarding the RFP for the fence at Hathaway Park. And it looks like we received two quotes. Straight line fencing at eleven thousand eighty-four dollars and southeast fence and supply. There's two of them, all, uh, alternative one is twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-five and all two is nine thousand one hundred and twenty-eight.
Alternative two was leaving the rails, leaving the, um, post there. But it looks like that's not gonna be a viable option.
Okay.
So it looks like we're gonna replace the whole rail. I mean, the whole fence, and this is something that that you approved to use Aqua money for a couple of weeks ago. This is at the Hathaway Park along the water, the fence is pretty old and and worn out, so this is to replace that.
Alright, so.
You're just approving the quote for all.
It's just approving, is it not, it's not selecting, um.
No contract or anything, you're just approving the quote for Allstate.
For Allstate?
Is it Allstate?
No, it's a. It's a straight line.
I don't know which one you're doing.
It says awarding the request for proposal, so and I have.
So the cheapest is straight line.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know where I got Allstate from, I made that up.
Okay. Alright, so with that, so I intend a motion to award the request for RFP for the front Hathaway Park to straight line fencing.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, we have another RFP, it's a very RFP-heavy day, so Gen item fifteen, vote on awarding their RFP. For IT Support Services for seven one, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty five.
Looks about right.
So we got one quote, we got one.
And the next one, it's of a different location.
So you're just awarding the bid, that's the only bid we got from.
Yeah, we got one bid is from Netrospect.
Yeah, which is who we use now.
Okay, perfect, said a hundred and twenty-five bucks an hour.
Which is what he charges now, so didn't go up.
Fantastic.
So with that.
Pretty fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, very fair, very fair. So without, I intend a motion to request, uh, to award the RFP for IT Services for seven one, twenty twenty four through six thirty, twenty twenty five. To Netrospect.
A motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, moving on, Gen item sixteen, this is vote on the six three, twenty twenty four town meeting. Postcard Design Print and Mail.
It's a typical postcard that we do, we just didn't know what size, because we have the MBTA. Information and I think you reached out to Victoria to have her draft something for like a portion, like, we were thinking do a full page. Because the like one page, one half of it, Victoria can. Draft something, some facts or even a link to more information about the MBTA zoning. Because we know that's gonna be something people are gonna be asking about, so that was kind of what, we're just looking for the direction, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
It's an extra three hundred dollars, to me, it's a no-brainer to give ourselves the extra space.
I agree.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, I look at as much information out there as possible, keep it as neutral as possible. All sides of the conversation, because we know that's gonna be probably the, uh, the big ticket item for that night, so, yeah, I agree.
Draft something up and get it too, as soon as we have it.
Here's, I guess, here's the other flip to that coin, so you're looking at roughly another. Two or three hundred dollars, say, to go to color, doesn't make sense to go to color and. I almost wonder and say yes, because once again, I want to be able to grab people's attention and a lot of times, black and white looks. Cheap and looks like, you know, just something else, so if anything we can do to make it pop to people to notice it. Once again, two or three hundred dollars is not gonna make or break this town, but if it gets even ten more people to look at it, I'm gonna say mission accomplished, so.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, um, no, I agree with you, if we can make sure people have eyes on it when they receive it, not just throw it in the trash. Or put it aside, that's what we want, so if it costs us three hundred dollars, that's easy money, um, do we like spending money? No. But this is worth it, because now people are getting the information they need regarding this MBTA, whether you approve it or dislike it, that's at least you're getting the information. We've done everything possible to put it out there, so.
As well as other things, I mean, obviously MBTA is gonna be the hot topic and I, so I know why you're saying that, but there might be some other stuff that needs to end up on there as well, right?
Sure.
So, um, there's gonna be things out, other people are very pro or against, let's face it. That could be on there that they can not know of, so.
And now that Lola, she's the one that worked on the, um, getting out the newsletter. Via the flash without the phone ringing, I think we could also get this postcard out that same way, it's a link that you have to do. We can also get, you know, utilize that to get this postcard out that way as well as mailing it, just trying to get to as many people as we can.
I agree.
So are we saying, just to be, get this article right, we're saying that eight by, eight and a half by eleven?
Yeah.
In color?
Yes.
Yep.
That's it, right?
Do we have to pick who to go with?
It's, it's, um, under ten thousand dollars, it doesn't have to go out to bid, it can just be the, um, best business practices. So in this case, I think, um, we've worked with, uh, one company consistently that's been very receptive to us. And sometimes we're under the gun, so that might be the better option for us.
I think we can leave that to your discretion.
Okay.
Yeah, I also have a question, but, you know, I only ask just for clarity.
Yeah. Yeah. Alright, so with that, I intend a motion, um, to utilize this eight and a half by eleven folded colored. Postcards, um, for the six three, twenty twenty four, you know, town meeting and, um, give. The town administrator discretion on what company to utilize to print this.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Gen item seventeen. Discussion of vote on Freetown Representative for Union Negotiations with the Regional School Districts.
So the, the school districts are negotiating their union contracts and we're supposed to have a representative at the table for those. Negotiations, it has not happened in the past, um. However, it should, we should have somebody who, you know, sit in on those negotiations as we know they're important and they. Ultimately, the town is paying a portion of the bill. I, I worded it this way because we're working on the, uh, Freetown Lakefield Regional District, but we're gonna also have the Bristol Plymouth. I don't know what they're, when their union contracts come up, but it, it'll be for both regional districts, I would assume, so. Um, if, if they have the same operation, so, just somebody who's willing to sit on those.
Is it, should be one of us?
It can be one of you, it can be me, it can be whoever you think, I mean, um, I just, I wanted to put it to you, to the board for a vote.
Is anyone?
Uh, well, I've already reached out to the unions a month, a couple of months ago, just to say hello, so I have no problem. Sticking up for the Board of Selectmen, if a few folks still want to do it, I'll, I'll continue that relationship and fostering that, that bridge between us and them, so.
Worse than me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, great, so with that, I intend a motion to, um, I guess appoint Carlos Loops as the Union Negotiation. Uh, for the representative, Freetown Representative for the Union Negotiations with the Regional School Districts.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye. Oh, you're welcome. Just delete that on the video, so my wife doesn't see it. That'll be fine.
I think it's good for them to know who the selectmen are and be able to reach out to you and talk to you too, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, I know when I spoke to them a couple of months ago to say hello, introduce myself into them, um, they were very, very happy that we reached out to say hello. And just to listen to what they had to say, um, so this is continuing that relationship with them, with the teachers' union. Make sure that we, we understand what they're coming from and we have that nice dialogue back and forth, so this is positive.
Absolutely. Alright, so Gen item eighteen, discussion of vote whether to declare the map table currently in the Planning and Conservation Office a surplus and send it to the transfer station. Wow, this seems like a big one.
Yeah.
I've heard a lot of those map tables on here.
It's a big table.
It is a big table.
Is, is, is there gonna be any kind of, uh, anyone to be upset at the town hall for?
I, I don't know, I don't know, but I don't even know if they can get it out of the room, like, I think that's a whole nother discussion for Kyle and Tim and the Highway Department, maybe. I think the legs have to be cut off of it, it's a big table, but it is just this big, it's wasting a lot of space, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess every time I've ever seen it, it's just kind of a holder of paper, right, like, it's not really much more than that.
Well, I will say that, um, Victoria and Nicole in that department have been working diligently. To scan all the documents, it's no longer a holder of paper, it's cleaned off and, um. Can be out of there, so.
Sounds like send it.
Alright.
Send it over.
It was made, so I'll intend a motion to declare the map table currently in the Planning and Conservation Use a surplus and send it to the transfer station.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Abandoned boats.
This is discussion of vote whether declaring three abandoned boats as abandoned and disposing of them.
Where are these boats?
Yeah.
I know where some boats are.
These boats are at the Highway Department, apparently, I, I don't really know, they were left on the sides of the road, like, throughout the. I don't know, they just left there, so.
What was we talking about here?
Dropped off at the, um, Highway Department and now they've been there for a year, nobody has the title, nobody's claimed them. I don't think they're good, I think they're.
Yeah, they're left on the side of the road, chances are they're probably.
Some ripped off the hull numbers in the.
You just have to declare them as abandoned and no good or dispose of them and I just put disposing of them. Because I'm gonna let Chuck figure out how to do that with the, between the transfers, I, I don't know how he's gonna dispose of them, he might have to, we might actually have to pay to get.
I was gonna say, my argument's probably gonna be is he, is how is he gonna fund having to pay for it, or if we can bring them to the transfer station. Crush them into the, maybe into the.
And that might be what happens and, and the transfer station has money in their budget, it'll ultimately have to come out of that budget, because. You know, but I don't know if Chuck's gonna have to bust them up and get a dump, a separate dumpster just for them. Or if he'll be able to crush them up and put them in the dumpster at the transfer station, but I'm gonna leave that up to, you know, Chuck and Vicky to figure it out, but Vicky does have money in her budget that she'll be.
Yeah, because rather than him having to bring them over there, they can just have a roll-off brought there and crush them up into the, at the highway barn, so he's not having to. He's a smart man, he'll figure it out.
Yeah, I, that's what I said, I will have a conversation with him, but, um, I think ultimately the funds are gonna come out of the transfer station's budget.
Alright, so with that, I'll turn a motion to declare three abandoned boats as abandoned, dispose of them.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now, uh, Gen item twenty, discussion of vote on whether to approve the request for an extension for the agreement. For the creation of a hazard mitigation plan until twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty four.
It's just a contract extension with, uh, who's working on our hazard mitigation plan.
Awesome.
Nice.
It's funded by a grant as well, but.
Alright, any questions or concerns?
No, no.
So with that, I'll turn a motion to approve the request for an extension of the agreement for the creation of the hazard mitigation plan until twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty four.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and twenty one. Uh, discussion of vote whether to approve paying reimbursement of expenses to witnesses called on behalf of the town in the lawless first. Versus the town of Freetown case, so it looks like you got some, you got some feedback from council?
Um, yeah, well, I've gotten multiple feedback, but I mean, basically, we've got this trial coming up June tenth. We've got multiple witnesses having to go to Boston, they're expecting it to be a ten-day trial, um, so these witnesses are going to be. Um, on standby, I would expect, um, and they're gonna travel back and forth to Boston. They're gonna have to park in Boston, which is exorbitant at the moment, I don't know, it might be a hundred, hundred fifty dollars a day for parking, I don't know. Depending on where they park, they're gonna have to eat while they're up there and some of them may lose time out of work. So I think we cannot pay them for their testimony, but we can reimburse them for their lost wages. Or their expenses out of pocket, so I'm not sure what the thought is, town council's opinion was that we don't really have the vehicle to pay them. In other words, what line item am I gonna take these expenses out of?
Right.
My only thought is, uh, the professional and technical line that is in the administrator's budget, at least. I think at the very minimum, you've got to reimburse them for parking and.
Mileage.
And mileage and, and maybe a food stipend, twenty-five dollars for lunch or something. Even though it's a ten-day trial, they should not be going up there ten days, it may only be, usually you're on standby and they call you and say, hey, you're gonna be up tomorrow. Plan on being in Boston, right, so it's probably only gonna be a one-day thing, maybe two, if they have you up there, they don't get to your testimony, just because. They're not on time or, you know, all kinds of things can happen, um, so. I think that they will be subpoenaed, so they will have to testify, um, regardless of. Or, or face the consequences of not showing up in court if you're subpoenaed. Um, I, I did talk to the council on the case and, um, he just wasn't getting the same feedback that I was getting from certain people, so. I'm not sure what you're gonna do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can, the wages seems, I don't know how, I don't think we can do that, but, I mean, parking, you know, what, lunch stipend makes sense to me.
Parking mileage, lunch.
Mileage.
Definitely, because then to your point two is, I think if you do for one, you have to do for another, so.
You have to do all of them, you can't do.
So how do you have a retired person, you know, and then someone else who's a professional at, you know. So how do you have a retired person, you know, and then someone else who's a professional at, you know, a well-paying job? So it's just.
I mean, some of them are currently still employees for the town, right? So they're gonna get paid anyway. Um, some of them are retired, so, you know, I don't think they're losing a day's pay, but there are others that have gone on and worked for other things, so. I'm just bringing it up because, um.
Yeah, I I listen, I feel for people too, because it's, you know.
We'll get a witness fee from the court, but it's very insignificant. I don't remember what it was. Last time I remember when I practiced law, it was like eight dollars.
How do you even offer that, like, good fee?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what it is now. I'd have to go.
It's inflation, it's probably nine dollars.
Nine twenty five.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah.
But I understand if you had to take a day out of out of work, but most people have PTO, but that being said, I guess they shouldn't have to use it.
Right.
Not I. My PTO days are behind me. Yeah, yeah, I I get it. It's it's.
It's a.
But it's a part of our legal system. I mean, that's just how it works.
Right.
I mean, I guess at least if we can say the mileage, the the lunch stipend and then submit for reimbursement for parking. Because the the parking thing, we can't even do a flat rate because it can be different.
Yeah, I know. Obviously, I think we'd expect.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just for our own accounting and, you know.
So then you say lunch up to a certain amount, all right, or because, and if you're expecting.
I would say no more than, what, twenty five dollars? I think you can get lunch up there for twenty five dollars.
Yeah, no, and I think that's fine, I guess, just saying, rather than just saying, okay, we're gonna give you twenty five dollars, saying we're gonna expect receipts and we say up to a certain amount.
That's a good sandwich for twenty five bucks.
Well, in Boston.
Right, right. Right, in Boston might be half a sandwich, but.
All right, so I think.
So you have a motion to pay, um, actual expenses, parking, my mileage reimbursement and up to twenty five dollars for lunch?
Yep. I'll entertain that motion.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, now, to the other personnel.
All right, thank you. Uh, item agenda twenty two, acknowledge the resignation of Amanda Frame, Farmer, sorry, Amanda. From the parade and fireworks committee, effective four twenty three twenty twenty four. Thank you, Amanda. You've done a great job with the fireworks and parade committee. We'll miss you. Uh, item agenda twenty three, acknowledge a disclosure form from Nick Filozzo, Stark Architects regarding the vestibule at the COA. Uh, this is a, as a, the chairman of the zoning. He's also a partial owner of the company. So he did the right thing by disclosing this to the town clerk and to the town. So thank you, Nick, for doing so. Item agenda twenty four, discussion and vote on whether to approve the following appointments, A through I. A, Harrison Goyette, Lauren Goyette, Katie Wizanowski. Okay, and James Byers as parking control officer as effective five thirteen twenty twenty four through nine nine twenty twenty four. B, David Cross, two. One, tax increment finance board as planning board chair, effective five one twenty twenty four through four thirty twenty twenty five. And two, public records clerk, planning board, effective four one twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty four. C, Margaret French as public records clerk, board of health, effective four one twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty four. D, Amy Cypher as public records clerk, library trustees, effective four one twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty four. E, Victoria Alfaro Duran as Serped Joint Transportation Planning Group, JTPG. Representative, effective six one twenty twenty four through five thirty one twenty twenty five. F, Deborah L. Petty as Serped as Joint Transportation Planning Group, JTPG. Designee, effective six one twenty twenty four through five thirty one twenty twenty five. G, Margaret French, Trevor Matthews, Deborah Petty and Patricia Roderick. Roderick, two tax increment finance board, effective five one twenty twenty four through four thirty twenty twenty five. H, James Boyven as effect, as planning board associate member, effective five seven twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty four. I, Betty Ferreira, as part-time senior clerk, town clerk, effective five seven twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty four. All right, any concerns, objections or comments?
Nope.
No, I think as long as everyone's okay with it, um, I can make the motion and you can second it because Trevor is involved in one of them.
Yeah.
So that way we can keep him out of it, just to keep it clean.
Sure. All right. I entertain the motion to approve the the appointments just read A through I on item agenda twenty four.
A motion made.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much. And then Board of Parks Mission, nothing tonight?
Have you looked for me?
And then Town Administrator.
So a couple of things, I just wanna update the board, the radio, uh, you know, the public radio communication project. The work has been completed on the three towers, um, just the antennas are up.
Awesome.
The wires are run down, super excited. We are expecting the equipment to arrive June first. And then they have to do their magic and like and 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 install it. But we're expecting it to be up and running by the end of June.
Fantastic.
On track for July fourth weekend to actually have working radios down.
That's huge.
We'll take it.
That project has been so, such a struggle, but I think we're finally getting momentum and it's moving, so. Super excited about that.
Because you've done a great job of continuing to stay on top of that.
This has been a long road to go. Before we get into the opera, remaining opera funding, I wanted to give some shout outs to some employees. Cause we've had some great things going on and, um, I wanna make sure that I do my best to try to recognize them. I recognized Kylie earlier for the, uh, event newsletter, you know, Carl and Carl with the team of people. Put on the Earth Day, right? Our second annual Earth Day, which seemed to be fabulous, a huge success. Made that little video. I I don't know if you get a chance to watch it, but John came out and, uh, filmed and and put that little video together. Awesome. I mean, kudos to Carl for organizing it. Kudos to everybody who has helped him and all the volunteers. The fire department was there. A lot of the employees who don't live in town were there. Um, great turnout. I can't say enough about how awesome that was. It's it's one of those community things. Nobody wants to do it, but everybody comes out and does what they have to do.
And you, I think it brought a lot of pride out from a lot of people that were there and were involved. And a lot of people driving by were noticing it and saying things, right? We had talked about that, the people who were stopping and thanking and honking their horns and doing things, right? So I think it can build momentum and only get bigger and bigger, so.
I think so, and I wanna, I wanna thank a special thank you to our sponsors, Co-Part for donating money, Advanced Air for donating money. Stop and Shop, always a great partner in the town for donating money, and Borges Brothers, who donated the money for the T-shirts and whatnot to make that possible. So thank you to to those, uh, those sponsors as well. I want to, um. Shout out to, uh, Dina Hayes and Patty Roderick. They they put together the first, um, I think it's the first, at least since I've been here, health fair for the employees. So that they could come down and get some information and it was, it was pretty neat. Um, we had representatives from AFLAC and from the SMART Plan, which is our retirement, you know, four, four, three, a four fifty seven plan. Um, we had, uh, someone here, I think from South Coast that was doing blood pressure and doing, um, A one C levels. And, uh, there we had somebody giving head massages. We had somebody here from Maya for the, our health insurance benefits in case you had questions. And there was somebody doing, um, little seedlings from town. She's, I think, a chiropractor right here, like down on the Quick Pick Plaza, I think. She was doing little seedlings for free for for the staff, so it was good. And then there was, uh, the food pantry donated some healthy snacks, so there was fruit and water. So that was, I think that was a great success and it was a lot more work than I think it appears when you just walk into it, you know, you, yeah, this is me. There was a lot of work that went into it.
Coordinating a lot, you know, that's, that's awesome.
And I, and and just behind the scenes, Kylie's been supportive of everybody, but, you know, this was spearheaded by Patty, uh, treasurer and Dina. In that department, so I wanna give them a shout out for doing that. Um, I also wanted to, uh, give a shout out to Victoria. She applied for a grant to the community project funding with us. Um, Congressman Ockingloss for community building funding would help with our engineering and planning. And it's made it to the next level, which is is impressive because it's not easy to do. They're hard, they're federal grants, they're hard to get. So we're still in that, um, you know, you, they get, they get recognized by, um, Congressman Ockinglass and he asks for more information. And you supply it and then you sort of this back and forth thing to see if it keeps moving forward. So we're in that process, but. It it's, um, it's exciting e- even, you know, where it's at. So I wanted to, uh, give her a shout out for doing that. And also, um, I was speaking with Senator Roderick's, uh, you know, he's, he's busy in his budget season up there. But he asked the town, you know, what is it that we need? And I said, well, you know, we need, I know, I I know at the budget meetings, you heard. Chief Ashley talk about the gear and how the firemen only have one set of sanctioned gear.
Yes.
And that he'd like to start getting them second, second set. So I mentioned that to Senator Roderick's and he's gonna fund that, so.
Oh, that's great.
Uh, sixty four thousand dollars for gear for for the fire department, so we'll see what he gives us for an air market, you know, um. But that's super exciting because that takes a burn off the town and I think, uh, the firemen will appreciate having the two gears. So if they use one while the second one's being cleaned, they have one that's commissioned. So I just wanted to say thank you. We have, we have great staff doing a lot of hard work for the town. I don't, I I don't think, I don't always do a good job of thanking them, but I, I wanna get some of these out there and hopefully do a better job of. Recognizing all that is going on in the town and how hard we're all working to get things done here. So I just wanted to get those out there, especially lately, there seems to be a lot of stuff going on. And then the last thing that I wanted to discuss is we still have some remaining opera funds. We have federal opera funds. I think most of our Bristol County opera funds will be. Utilized just depending on their, um, applications, whether they're approved or not. But I wanted to get a sense from the selectmen of what your, if there's any projects you have that you're passionate about that we haven't addressed or that we're not addressing. As we move forward, I don't necessarily need an answer tonight. There's no vote being taken, but I wanted to throw that out there. I've also sent that to the department heads, like if there are projects that they have, because, you know, they don't, I don't always have the information in front of me and I. I, uh, so I have gotten some feedback already on that, some things that Cheryl's looking for. And I will bring them to you, um, once I give everybody a chance to respond, but I also wanted to ask. You if there was things that you were looking to get done in town that we could put together before this opera funding.
Yeah.
Runs out, if there's any.
The only thing I thought of real quick when we, and I think we, I actually reached out to Victoria already asking if there's any grants available. Basketball course right up the road. It's been years before they, since they've been touched. The rims are off, the backboards are off, the pavement's off, not enough seating. It's just a, almost like an eyesore, just sits there not being used.
They used to be used all the time.
Right. If I think if you change a few things, add a few benches, it shouldn't be much money to get it recoded, new rims. And maybe even some lights on those poles. That's what the poles were there for and that's really the big money item is maybe some dust till dawn lights, right? So that way, it it gets used.
You're too right, so that, I mean, it makes sense to have it there.
Yeah.
Lighting, security, so.
So.
Yeah, I I don't have, that's, I think that's a great idea. I think that it also makes sense for us to get everything before I. That's a good idea. So I'm not gonna just spitball something off. Always needs.
Right.
Right, always wants, I should say, but let's see what everyone else's needs are first, kinda get everything in front of us and then say, okay, you know. This is what we have left. This is what we, you know, kind of prioritize from there. But beyond that, which I keep commending you for, because I really do think that's a good idea. Um, I don't have anything per se that I say, oh, I wanna hurry up and get this.
Do you, do you need a thing I thought of? This is like one, how much money would it cost for, you know, I think about the train, right? We have all that metal fencing around. That's not really a big sound barrier. Is there anything we can do potentially for the residents that are around the train that can help reduce some of the noise potentially? You know how you go on the highway, you see those like, almost like those walls on the side?
Yeah.
I know.
I think that that's gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, not.
Kind of funding, but you know.
Yeah.
I I could think about for a grant if coming down the pike, I don't know, um.
Right, I, yeah, I'm sure it'll be, you know, thirteen stops, it'd probably be a little bit of money, but. I know, I know.
And MBTA, they're non-responsive to anything.
Right.
Uh, it's just, it's just such frustration. So even if we could fund it and we wanted to do it, it would be on their property, on their stuff. I don't know that they would.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm sure we can all get a list together and how much money do we have?
I'm just asking you guys to start thinking about it. Um, at the next meeting, I'll probably have something put together, um, at the, you know. And and presented to you as far as what I think and what people have asked for. And we can make decisions, but I also wanted you to get, have the opportunity to be doing the same if there's something that. You, you know, you think, oh, I wish we could fund that, okay, cause, you know.
Yeah.
Money's going to be tight and going forward and budgets, I believe that, um, so I, if there's any of these small projects.
Yeah, I guess my, my thoughts are is listening to the employees, but then also seeing. Kind of because the reason why I think that that's such a great idea is because it can affect a large amount of people potentially. Or a small amount of money, right? So I think that that's the type of stuff, if we're not gonna say, okay, jeez, we could really use this for something at town hall. That's really gonna make a difference and whatever, let's do something that's gonna be the best for the most amount of people. Right? That's not gonna be, that's not gonna be a lot of money. I mean.
Right.
Nothing's cheap, but.
It's not gonna be. And I'm thinking I might just word it like, um, you know, park improvements or something. And then we can go as far as we want to go, yeah. I know one of the employees is looking for some ADA improvements. At the town hall in addition to the bathroom, so that will be probably high on my, um, on the list. And it, I don't know the cost. I asked, I've asked them, I've turned around and asked them to then get me quotes. Okay, so this is what you wanna do, give me a price. Because otherwise I have no way to gauge it. And some of them are from the police and some of the new stuff that, you know, the survey that he spoke about and some of the programming that he likes to do. So I've asked him to put dollar figures to it. So I don't know, I will pull it together. Um, but I just wanted to give the board the opportunity to do the same. And if you need to have a conversation, maybe just give me a buzz and I'll see what I can do.
Well, thank you for reminding me of the ADA. There's one more thing I I'd like to throw out there for this, this opera funding, for ADA. So access to the water, very, it's very hard, the way we have things set up at Hathaway Park, even even the pond and everything else. On the other side of Hathaway Park is the conservation area, but is there a way to build a deck? A floating deck, so it rises in, with the ebbs and flows of the river, that allows people to go down there, enjoy the river, maybe some fishing. But also ADA accessibility for those folks that don't have the ability to get down to the water. Um, because, you know, uh, there there are times that I use a wheelchair and I would like to do things and and I tell you, it's, it's, it's tough sledding sometimes.
Are you talking about Hathaway or are you talking about?
You know, with, so Hathaway Park, that you have the main park, on the other side of the reeds, is like that open space area. A lot of it's conservation, I understand that. They can't because it's all muddy. It's all muddy and it's always, uh, it's always.
Well, I mean, I guess we would, we would have to, I mean, just you'd have to get permitted, right?
Right.
Now, but you, but when you say that, what about Port, I have not been to Port.
Porous pasture, yeah.
Is that something that would make sense? You know how they do those mats, like those?
Yeah.
They're just like, uh, blue or green mats that you just spike into.
Oh, right, like at the beach.
To walk on at the beach for people with mobility issues.
That could be as simple as that, absolutely. Um, yeah, no, Porous pasture, it it has that long driveway to get to the, down there. And then it's pretty, you know, it's like, it's brackish water, but it's also great, great views. Um, I see a lot of people down there all the time, so.
Putting that water in, that explains a lot about me.
Don't eat the shellfish.
Victoria in as well because, you know, she was instrumental in the ADA transition plan and what's in there. I'm just, I'm throwing out things that have been already asked for by me and I know, I think Mike was asking, uh, for some of the, some work in the cemetery as well. So I'll put it together. I I know it's gonna be difficult to distribute it in little amounts, so. Um, I'll work on it. I just said, I just wanna, this needs to be wrapped up, so I wanted to throw it out there and then. Figure out where we're gonna go from here.
Yeah, because to your point, the last thing we wanna do is give it back.
Right.
Yeah, no, I have, I do have a couple of big things that I can fund. Um, I think, I don't know if you heard Chuck saying he needs a new loader coming up soon, so, um.
But I guess so to that point is, I'm sorry to cut you off, is that we should also have that type of stuff where we can think about it and saying what. Does make the most sense, right? So we can wait out, so we're not saying, oh, let's just do this because we have the money. I'd rather use that money towards something we need.
Right. So I did, I did ask Chuck, I I did ask, um, actually Eric in Chuck's department, like. Okay, out of the two, the sweeper and the loader, which one do you need more and get me a quote? So I do have that as well. So I do, I am pulling it together on my end. I just, I just wanna give it to you a- as a board and say, okay, if you had anything that was really pressing. That I have, that I'm not aware of, let me know.
Right.
I'll pull it together as far as quotes and what makes.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Uh, P B O of Jared, it's one of those opportunities that we're not, probably not gonna get for probably ever again, opera funds or things like that, right? Unless we have another. And, um, might as well just use it for those things that we always say, hey, maybe next time, this is a good opportunity for getting those, maybe next time. Agenda items out of the way and, um, make our town a little bit better, you know, so. Great work. And you said kudos to all the employees. I wanna say kudos to you and.
Sign and then, Jared, I said.
Let's do it. Well, while we sign, you, you know, Deb, you said a lot of kudos to a lot of employees and and, uh, let's say kudos to yourself. Luann and Lola for you guys working tails off and, uh, it's, we noticed it, the town notices it and we thank you for it.
Second that motion. Second that motion.
I third that motion.
I'm I'm actually not gonna be at town meeting, by the way, guys. I'm not sure if you know that. I'll be in Canada.
Oh, Canada.
Um which is unfortunate because it's gonna be an interesting one.
Mm-hmm. I want the house packed that night.
More likely it will be, as it should.
We are trying to get something in the week before, some kind of an informational meeting for the MBTA zoning week before. Have you talked to Victoria? So I would stick to.
So have a weekly meeting. We we take that information out to people as much as possible.
I'll probably be in Canada the week before too.
Yeah, no, no, not necessarily for this board, but just so that people know that we are gonna try to get out some information prior to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that's really important.
I can tell you this, Trevor, the internet connection in Canada is not as great as that in the United States. I can tell you that for a dollar.
It's tough for me time-wise, really. Well, I can't really zoom into the town meeting. There's no point of that. Just the pre-meeting, yeah. I tried that. I tried that Canadian Zoom meeting and it just keeps cutting out. Although my hotel does have really good wifi. It's nice.
Did you just get back?
I got back on Saturday, Friday night at like two in the morning and then I go back, I go back on Sunday.
For parking control.
For two weeks.
That was the manager, fine manager. Being cool, sir.
Yep.
Speaking of the the bohramp, is um, has the water receded at all? I haven't been out there.
Not much. I went by there two days ago to look and see and yeah.
Maybe to get out there, it's just, my schedule for May is absolutely disgusting. It's just full. Good reasons, but it's still full.
Another certificate for Debbie to add to our wallpaper.
I wanna saw scenes on the wall.
I just can't wait.
I've always told them.
Those are coming up too, so it's gonna be every time you walk past.
That's right.
The town block, they're gonna grab you. I need to sign.
Well, I saw the one for the associate member and I was like six thirty, I'm like, oh, it's six thirty after that, it's gonna be everybody's, so stop stretching. It's a couple tunnel season. Yeah, something that I try to sleep by and she goes, oh, she's like, I need you.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made second.
All favor?
Aye.